Diane, you ready?
What's...
Let's call our municipal housing agency governing board meeting to order. And with that, I will ask the clerk to please take role of the board.
County?
Here.
Coleman?
Here.
Bozen?
Here.
Gray?
Here.
Westergaard?
Here.
Mandelbaum?
Here.
Gatto?
Here.
We have a quorum.
Item two is approving the agenda as presented and/or as amended.
Move.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Item passes. Item three is approving the submittal of the Des Moines Municipal Housing Agency's 2018 Section and Management Assessment Program, CMAP, certification to the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development, HUD, Board Communication Number 19-361. I'll ask if there's anybody in the audience who wants to make any comment on that. Seeing none, board, anybody have any comments?
I'll move it.
Item's been moved, and I ask everybody to vote.
Seven yes.
Item four is authorizing the submittal of the mainstream voucher program grant application to the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development, HUD, Board Communication Number 19-360. Again, I'll ask if there's anybody in the audience who would like to speak on this item. Seeing none? Any comment, board members? Item's been moved?
Seven yes.
Item five is an authorization for the city manager to release mortgage and related security instruments for Tiffany Hellinger of 115 East Pleasant View Drive pursuant to the 5H Affordable Home Ownership Program, Board Communication Number 19-359. Any comments on that? Anyone in the audience?
I'll move item five, Mr. Mayor.
Item five's been moved. It's a good program, Mr. Manager.
Absolutely.
Ms. Coleman?
Sir. Great.
Seven yes.
All right, if we could have a motion to adjourn?
Move.
It's been moved, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We said adjourned. All right, prior to our city council meeting this evening, we're going to have a message from our own council member, Joe Gatto. Joe, you want to stand up?
Sure.
Okay, those who would participate with us, we'd ask you to stand at this time, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Heavenly Father, we thank you for this beautiful day and the beautiful weather you've given to us. We thank you for our families and especially all of our children that are going to be returning to school, that you be with them, you bless them as they go to college and high school, elementary, just be with them, be with our public safety and all of our public works, folks, as they work extremely hard, and all of our staff. Just be with all of us and bless this meeting. In your name we pray.
Amen.
Thank you.
All right, let's call our meeting to order, and I'll ask the clerk to please take role as city council.
County?
Here.
Coleman?
Here.
Bozen?
Here.
Gray?
Here.
Westergaard?
Here.
Mandelbaum?
Here.
Gatto?
Here.
We have a quorum.
All right, item two is approving the agenda as presented and/or as amended, and quickly, item 20 was withdrawn by the legal department for further review. Regular agenda items, which are 39 to 53, item 41 was withdrawn, item 42 was withdrawn at the request of Mr. Milligan, item 43 was withdrawn at the request of Mr. Sale, and item 44 was withdrawn by the city manager for further study. Anything else? Yep, and there's been a request that item 47 has to be advanced to right after the consent. There are some people in the audience that have asked to have that done.
Great. I'll move it with that amendment to the agenda, bringing that agenda item up front.
Okay.
Seven yes.
Item three is approving the consent agenda tonight. Those are items 3 through 38. These are routine items that we usually take as one vote unless somebody either from the audience, the general public, or a member of the council asks to have one withdrawn for further discussion or maybe clarification. This evening, item 4Q, council member Coleman votes no. Item, I believe that's 6A, council member Coleman wishes to speak. Item 15, council member Mandelbaum wishes to speak. And item 18, council member Coleman wishes to speak. Are there any other items that anybody in the audience would like to have polled for additional discussion or clarification?
I see...
I have a few questions on 6B and 11B and F.
On 15?
6B.
6B.
6B and 11B and F.
D and F.
And somebody else?
A gentleman raised his hand out there, Mr. Mayor.
Yep.
Yeah, this is my second time coming to one of these things. I really don't know how this thing operates, but listen, so the things that are growing up that I'm not familiar with, I don't want to slow anybody down, but I do, I'm sure I'm going to have questions, but should I just wait and talk to someone?
Okay, have you looked at the agenda?
Yeah, we haven't believed it at home just...
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Mr. Manager, maybe there's an assistant that could speak to the individual and...
Sue Ann?
Sue Ann?
Or Chris. I have a feeling it may be a community development that you'd like to speak to. Are you interested in a property?
I'm interested in this whole...
Process.
Yeah.
So I'll move it.
Just, Joe, before you make your motion, I do not need to speak on 18. I misread my notes, I just wanted to see it.
Okay, let's strike 18.
I'll move item three with that being stricken out of there.
Go.
Seven yes.
All right, let's go to... You still want to speak on 6A, right?
I would.
Okay. So item 6A is ordering the construction of the following. It's A is Hartford Avenue rehabilitation from southeast 22nd Street to the county soccer complex, receiving bids 9/10/19 and setting the date of that hearing for 9/23. Engineer's estimate is $1,100,000. Council Communication Number 19-371. Mr. Coleman?
I'm for this, and I'm going to move it, or Joe can move it. As I kind of look at my bucket list of things to do, making sure that county soccer has a really vibrant future is one of them. And I say that as a councilperson, as somebody whose kids played out there, but actually as a CVB board member too, what we do out there is huge for the Des Moines hotel market and the amount of money that we generate through hotel motel that takes care of many of our attractions. So I hope this earns council support and that we pass it. It's a tremendous opportunity. It's not at the complex, but it's the gateway and the path to the complex. And I just think this is great, and thank our Public Works and Engineering and Parks Department for putting this together and getting it on the agenda.
Can you move it, right?
Move it, Chris.
I'll move it.
I just want to add, and I know Joe may want to talk about it a little bit later, but we do have occasionally some issues out there, public safety and health, and occasionally it gets blocked by some rail issues. So we're hopeful that maybe we can have a discussion with...
We are going to have a discussion.
One of our rail providers here in the area. So with that...
Seven yes.
All right, takes us to item 6B, which someone in the, one of our citizens has asked to poll, which is 2019 sewer lining program, receiving bids 9/10/19, setting the date of hearing of 10/14/19. The engineer's estimate on this particular program is $3,500,000. Council Communication Number 19-368.
Jenny Kleis, 2505 47th Street. So I note that there's a whole list of streets that are going to be affected or get lining in the storm sewers, and I was wondering if there was any place where somebody could tell me more specific on where those streets are, like for example Hickman? Is that in the, is that in the 47th neighborhood, or Hickman's a pretty long?
Are all these up on the, in the communication letter?
Yes.
They're just listed on the council communication as streets.
I think there might be.
As well as a map, but it might be difficult to read, so I would have to direct you to probably Public Works with the lining program.
Yeah, you mean this little map?
Right.
Even with my reading glasses, I can't see it.
Right, understood.
That little map. So maybe you might, rather than go through it individually, if she's got some specific questions, maybe you two could talk about it on the side?
That'd be great, a quick summary, real quick.
Sure, sure.
Honorable Mayor, members of the city council, Steve Neighbors, city engineer, they're correct, there is a map that's in the council communication that probably is, is hard to see, but what this contract is, is rehabilitation of existing sanitary sewers. It's typically a trenchless technol, most of the work is trenchless technology. It's basically inserting a, kind of a resin impregnated liner, clock liner, using hot steam, you typically do it from the upstream manhole, so you're not even tearing up the road. And this liner gets kind of impregnated by hot steam, and these liners basically almost create a new pipe within the existing pipe and can provide a substantial life, new life to the pipe, sometimes upwards of more than 50 years. And so a lot of times the resin, it'll be kind of like a moving train operation, we're doing like 22,000 linear feet with this program. So the map is probably hard to see because there's quite a few locations all over town that are needed, but yeah, we could try and get you maybe a more clearer map or...
Do you know off the top of your head where on Hickman?
It's awful tough to see, Steve.
Want to borrow my glasses?
Yeah, sorry, yeah, the map, sorry, the map I have is pretty small, so at this time I can't, but we can send you that, so, yep, yeah.
Okay, thanks, Steve. Usually send a scope down there. All right?
I'll move it, 6B.
Mr. Coleman?
Seven yes.
Takes us to 11B. These again are more public improvements. 11B is paving improvements, Woods on River Platte 10, between Sternquist Construction Inc. and Hubble Realty Company. Jenny, did you want to talk about that one as well?
I want to see.
D is in dog.
D and F.
Okay, D as in dog as opposed to B. All right, so D as in dog is storm sewer improvements, Southwoods Estates, Platte 1, between Priority Excavating LLC and TK Development LLC. Jenny?
Thank you. Is this new construction?
Yeah. That has been completed. Yes.
It has been completed.
Yes, this is the acceptance of completion.
So, and this is for storm sewers in new construction?
Yes, that was privately done and then handed over to the city as part of this process.
Privately done but handed over to the city?
Correct.
When developers do developments, they often put in those infrastructure pieces, and upon completion and upon our inspection, we take over the responsibility of moving forward.
So are we paying them back, or are we taking it over from here?
It's part of the development and part of the cost of the lots.
Part of the cost of doing business?
Oftentimes a new first...
They usually pass it on to people that might buy property in and around their development.
Where are these funds coming from?
Their pockets or the bank.
Okay.
All right, would somebody move D?
I have the same question on F too, so...
So D and F?
Okay. I'll move 11D and F, then. Okay.
Do we need to move B? Joe?
Well, just move the whole thing. Yeah, move separate, Coleman.
Okay.
And 11D.
For the record.
11B probably, because he pulled B.
Okay, let's move 11B.
Moved.
Move.
I think you gotta watch again. They cleared it.
Seven yes.
11D, I'll move that. Linda?
I thought I did it. We're doing it again individually.
Okay, and 11F.
I'll move it.
Seven yes.
All right, thank you. All right, that takes us now, I think that's it. Oh, 15, I'm sorry. All right, this is land property transaction, this is acceptance of a real estate document for the voluntary acquisition of property interest located at 3418 and 3505th Avenue for the North Side Library Parking Lot Expansion Project. Council Communication Number 19-367. Council member Mandelbaum.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to flag this as an item and make sure that we're doing everything we can with these homes to relocate them. And I don't know if we can use what we would otherwise use for demolition costs, if we cannot, to help assist with that effort. But we've had a lot of conversation about affordable homes, and these look to be two nice homes in decent condition, and there are plenty of empty lots that maybe with some of our nonprofit partners, we could figure out a way to keep these as part of the housing stock and add them to a neighborhood and enhance those neighborhoods in appropriate places.
So, Mayor, if I could, we can absolutely look at every opportunity to save these and move them to new locations, and before any demo would occur, to communicate with council on what the ultimate disposition would be.
Okay.
If that's acceptable.
That's great.
It's okay, I'll move item 15.
Yep, thank you.
Seven yes.
All right, that completes the consent agenda. It has been, we changed and asked for modification of the agenda this evening to move 47 forward to the front end of, right after consent. So 47 is agreement for termination of previously executed agreement of cooperative public service with Polk County regarding the skateboard park to reflect that Polk County will own and operate the skateboard park after it is constructed. Council Communication Number 19-378. So those who would like to speak on this item, we'd ask you to step forward at this time.
Mayor, that's happening, I'd love to just thank the parties involved in this agreement, obviously Polk County, but there's been quite a bit of our citizens that have been working on this project as well. And we've gotten to a point where we, there's an incredibly impressive project in front of us with the skateboard, and it's now been arranged.
And we're going to put a restroom in there.
There will be a restroom on site as well, so...
So, go ahead if you have a comment on it. We often take times to recognize elected officials or past elected officials. Christine Hensley's here. This is not a long commitment compared to the bus trip she took to the Quad Cities sometime in the last week, took a busload of people over there to talk about the project and, or a van load. Thank you for all the time you've spent working on this, and it would have been easy for you to give up after ending your job here, but this is going to happen and pretty exciting. And a special thanks to Polk County, because I think we were in, we need to find a solution on ownership and long-term, and they always step up for us.
She's setting the bar high for former council members and what they can contribute.
I'm going to, I'm going to need her as an advisor.
Okay, move it.
I'm happy to move it.
And again, thank you, Polk County, and everybody that's worked so hard on this. I think this is going to be a great addition to our whole list of things for people to see, do, and participate in right here in the city of Des Moines, so thank you, everybody, for all your work on this.
I'm going to lead the best ball team.
Seven yes.
All right, let's go back to 39. 39's admitting chapter 114 of the municipal code for an amendment to match school times for passenger loading zone on 44th Street north of College Avenue. Council Communication Number 19-374. A is the final consideration in the ordinance above, the waivers requested by the city manager and requires six votes. Anybody here to speak on 39, an ordinance first consideration? And an A attached to that, that manager would like to have us vote and waive the other two ratings? And it looks like there's no opposition, so...
I'd like to move 39 and 39A then.
Okay.
School my mom taught at.
Seven yes.
Can't agree.
39I is a council request from our own city council member, Joe Gatto, to speak regarding stop trains blocking streets in Des Moines. Joe?
Mr. Mayor, thank you, and Councilwoman Westergaard is probably going to have a few words to say, because it affects part of her ward also. So last week, we had the Iowa State Fair, very, very busy around there, and we've got, we've got trains that are blocking Hubble for three hours.
What?
To me, that's completely unacceptable. I'm not sure why that would ever be happening. I have a call from a few business owners, let alone just the public safety reason that it shouldn't be happening, but let alone that affects all of their businesses and just their way of their transportation. And I know there's probably a few folks here that would like to say a few words, but I know the railroad operates on their own time, and we don't have any control over it, but I think this council has made adequate changes for the railroad to help them. Accommodating some of their needs, probably six years ago, maybe seven years ago now, so this wouldn't happen, and it's happening again. And so I'm not exactly sure, I know there is some type of law in place, something, because this is just not, I mean, for one thing, it's just not safe, I mean, you can't, you can't get anywhere if, I mean, if it's blocking. So I really just would like to refer this back to your office, Scott, and I know we haven't had an opportunity to speak about it, maybe you've seen it on here and you've already been working on it, but I think that we need to talk to UP especially, I believe it's them that's doing this. And so I know they have representatives that are available that we can speak to, and I know they say they're trying to do their best, but three hours on a public street in 19 minutes is not...
No, it's one day.
Is, that's just the one day. I mean, it's been, it's happened more than just the one day. So I know, I know you guys came down here, you're welcome to come up and talk, but I think that we need to get to the bottom of it, we need to have a discussion with them, and I appreciate you letting us know. I wish that I could blink my eyes and the train would have been gone for you, but I can't, I mean, we can't really control anything that they do. It's the craziest thing, it's something that I learned since I've been here, because I, I thought the city could control everything inside the city boundaries, but we don't control the railroad in any way, shape, or form. And so, anyone else can add anything? I know that we've all probably had calls, and we were all affected by it.
I've been affected by it.
Yeah, and I'm sure you were, yes, I can imagine.
Councilman Coleman, at the time, as I hit Dean Avenue, I was sitting there for 30 minutes, and I had other things to do besides waiting for a train for 30 minutes, which is nothing like three hours. And I said then, we need to bypass over Dean, or someplace, because if you're on the east side, you can get blocked, and the only place you can go is university, or maybe Euclid, unless the train's going south.
It must be that seat, whoever sits in that seat. Holy cow, they all want to bypass it. It comes up out of that seat, doesn't it?
It is, if you're a east sider, you are totally impacted, and that's three hours. I know I had a call from Mr. Leachman, but I was...
But we know how to drive around the train, but we can't get out on the street.
Right.
Right.
Yeah, because everybody's backed up. I mean, it is totally unacceptable, it's not safe.
Yep. Linda?
And I did talk to Scott and Chris Johansson on Friday about this. I really do think that we need to get with UP. If we need to talk to our congresspeople, we need to have those conversations, because there are some other issues. And I know I sent the city, and I sent the UP contact that I have, that's always been very responsive to me, about some other trash and debris that's there behind Glenbrook where UP is, and the neighbors tell me UP was out last fall, they said there's so much junk and debris, they can't, they can't mow it, but we'll be back in the spring. Well, now we're at the end of August, and the neighborhood has seen no one. I also drove around, six years ago when we closed Hall, there were some landscaping requirements that were put in, and I don't think it's been done. So I just think that we have several issues that it's probably time to sit down and really get something done, because I remember the conversations going back even eight, nine years ago, where we were told, well, if we close, you know, if we close Hall, that will, it will make the trains move faster, because they can get in and unload, and it's not working. It's not working, and like the mayor said the other day, it looks like the 34th Street short yard, there are no trains in there anymore. So we really have to do something. It's vital to these business people. When they have people sitting across the tracks and they can't, they can't move, and I know Mr. Holt has called, Fisher Autobody, I mean, these are people that have invested in the, in the east side, in the neighborhoods, and they're just being stopped. Plus, it frustrates residents, you know, nobody likes to sit there and just have no idea when we can move. So if we could have that conversation with whoever we need to, see if we can't work out something so it works better than what it is right? something so it works better than what it is right now.
So is there a law on not blocking? And if there is?
It's twenty-five minutes, isn't it, Jeff?
Nope.
There's nothing.
Nothing.
The railroad says forty minutes. They can move. If they move, they can block traffic, but they gotta move within forty minutes.
Like move just a little bit?
Yeah.
Great. That does a lot of good.
And then that brings on another onslaught of traffic because the other ones get mad and drive away and then a new set of cars sit and wait. So it's suspicious, it really is.
And, and I mean, I was on the phone to UP and she said, oh, Jack's calling me. So she hung up and then she called me back. The UP person called back and said, I've been in contact with the supervisors. We're going to have discussions. But that's, that's the last that I've heard.
Well, then maybe, Scott, we can have discussions here soon after, since she's had discussions and she hasn't called any of us back and let us know what UP's discussion was about. So.
Yeah. My, my last call from them was, I think it was March, when we were talking about the short line yard. And they were gonna get right back to us and, I'm still waiting.
So Mayor, if I could, so it's, it's been explained that the authority to make that change is not unfortunately with the council. However, this is the best group to advocate for our residents and our, and our citizens and our businesses. And so we've got that message clear from you and we can advance this up through the chain of command, if you will, at UP and make it very clear to them that these types of delays are unacceptable and, and frankly, new to the situation that coincides with some other changes they've made. So we, we can make that message very clear to them and garner whatever other allies we have in that messaging and, and push that forward. So we will absolutely do that.
And to all of you, and Jack, I see you and I, I appreciate everybody sending me some stuff. If, if, those are very valuable and it may be that if you all are willing to do so, if we can actually get them in town, might be nice to bring them in here and let's have a little meeting and let them, let them hear it.
I think we'd all be.
Because we occasionally get a horse talking to them and it's like, you know, not a lot of progress is made. So I think the more of us that are, that are giving them helpful hints on, on how to run their business in Des Moines, I think it'd be helpful.
And it might be, you make a trip to Omaha.
Yeah.
I have no problem with that, whatever it takes.
I'd, I'd go. It's just not fair what, what's happening to the business owners over there especially and those that depend on it.
Well, especially all the accommodations that we've made for them. I mean, come on. Okay.
All right. So you have my motion, correct? Refer it back to you and try to either get, set a meeting here or a few of us can travel there and, and get it taken care of. But, and yes, and escalate it up the chain. Let's see what we can figure out and how to get it resolved. Okay? And we'll keep these guys in the loop when we do it.
Yep.
All of you.
And thanks all of you for getting in touch with us. I've seen it, but I think that as we document it day after day and they know that it, this is seriously impacting everything that we've been trying to help them fix for decades, they need to know it's not working. So thank you.
Seven, yes?
Thank you very much.
It is five oh one. Let's move to the hearings. And our first hearing item is item forty-eight. Item forty-eight is on the proposition to authorize a lease purchase agreement in the principal amount not to exceed one hundred and twenty thousand dollars for the purpose of acquiring four Nissan Leaf hatchback electric vehicles. Council Communication number nineteen dash three seventy-five. Anybody in the audience here to talk about electric vehicles? Seeing none?
Seeing none. Yeah, well, I'd like to, to move this item. I'm excited about this step. I think it's another example of the city taking a positive step towards a comprehensive climate action plan and that's thinking about what we do with our vehicle fleet. I also happen to think that on this one, if we are ahead of the curve on this, it's gonna represent an opportunity for significant savings in our, in our operations. Everything that I'm reading is that we are just a few years away from parity in cost between electric vehicles and internal combustion engine vehicles, particularly for the, for the sedans. And I think we're gonna see our, our heavy duty and, and other, other vehicles with electric options as well. But the fuel costs and operations and maintenance savings are significant. So once we, once we hit parity in cost, if we are prepared and ready for the transition because we've taken some steps to get familiar with these vehicles and how they perform, I think we, we stand to reap some pretty significant benefits. So glad to, glad to see these steps being taken and look forward to seeing what staff comes up with in terms of recommendations for next steps.
Item forty-nine on the vacation of a portion of Thomas Beck Road right of way located south of and adjoining twelve thirty-five Thomas Beck Road and the conveyance to first Midwest of Iowa Corporation doing business as Pomerance Realty Company, Robert Pomerance, President, four thousand and forty dollars. A is the first consideration in the ordinance above, then B is the final consideration in the ordinance above that waivers requested by the applicant and requires six votes. Is there anybody in the audience who would like to speak on this item?
Seeing none, Mr. Mayor. I'll move forty-nine, forty-nine A and B.
Item fifty on the conveyance of the east half of vacated alley right of way located west of and adjoining twelve fifty-eight East Twenty-Second Street to Joshua and Brandy Armstrong, twenty-five dollars. Anybody here to speak to that item? Seeing none?
I will move item fifty.
Item fifty-one on the conveyance of the south half of vacated east-west alley right of way located north of and adjoining nine twenty-five Southeast Ninth Street to Terry L. Whit, Casper. Anybody in the audience to speak on this item? Seeing none?
I'll move item fifty-one, Mr. Mayor.
Seven, yes?
Item fifty-two on the vacation and conveyance of the north-south alley right of way located north of eight sixteen Shaw Street between Southeast Eighth Street and Southeast Ninth Street to Richard A. Anderson and Linda K. Cassis for a hundred and fifty dollars. A is the first consideration of this ordinance above and B is the final consideration in the ordinance above the waivers requested by the applicant and requires six votes. Let's open that hearing and see if there's anybody in the audience to speak on this item.
I see none, Mr. Mayor. I'll move fifty-two, A and B.
Seven, yes?
Item fifty-two, which is on request from Grasso Properties One LLC. Steve Grasso is the officer to rezone thirty-nine oh eight Lower Beaver Road from R. One sixty-one family low-density residential to limited R. Two two-family residential to allow for demolition of an existing single-family dwelling on the property in the redevelopment with a two-family dwelling. A is the first consideration in the ordinance above, B is the final consideration in the ordinance above waivers requested by the applicant and requires six votes. Let's open the hearing. Is there anyone here to speak to this item? Seeing none?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, there, it is kind of, I hate to see a single-family dwelling go down and a duplex go back in, but the house that currently is there is a little tired, needed some help. So the neighborhood thought it was the best thing. They're all for it. So I'm gonna move fifty-three, fifty-three A and fifty-three B.
All right, that completes our hearings at five oh seven. Before they leave, I see that we, it looks like we have some Boy Scouts back here?
Yep.
You guys wanna stand up? What troop are you guys from?
Twenty.
Troop twenty-two. Where is that located?
All the way.
All right, good, good. Are you guys getting a badge for coming here tonight?
Yeah.
Uh-huh.
So to serve the community and communication.
All right, good, good. Good job. It's good to see you guys here. And Mr. Velocis used to have little things for him, so, all right.
It's the last three, so you guys win. I mean, you're the winners. So before you leave, stop by here.
All right, thanks for coming. Appreciate it. All right. Takes us back to item forty. Item forty is from Travis Bennett and Mason Mitchell to speak requesting a waiver of demolition fees on a lot they are trying to purchase.
So my name is Mason, business partner Travis. Our business is Kinetic Homes. We're actually real estate investors in Des Moines area, flipping houses, buying and holding. And we're actually, we're here to discuss is a property that we have under contract right now. It's actually a vacant lot. It was a, the house was on it, but it burned down. Homeowner didn't have insurance on it and then a demo lien ended up being on it. So I'll let Travis kinda take it over from there.
Just became a city nuisance and the demo costs were around seventeen-five, pretty much around that mark. Nothing really seems to happen with it. It's in the first year of the tax sale in June. It'll probably just cycle through like the next couple of years. It'll probably get bought a couple of times, but no one will really redevelopment on it once they find out the demo costs. So we were just wondering if, if the demo costs could be lowered or waived so that we could build a single-family residence on it.
And we ran some numbers here with, once we get it redeveloped, that estimated tax roll per year and how it increased the taxes, how much that amount could be paid back within. So that's essentially what we're here for.
Yep.
When did the fire occur?
I think it was like four or five years ago.
Mr. Mayor, have we've ever done anything like this before where we waived that, waived some of these fees or is that part of maybe Invest DSM or with some of the target areas or what?
I had a question about this at last meeting too.
We talked to the city attorney and then she said that anything over the eight thousand dollar mark, we would just go in front of city council and just see where you stand on it.
I, I think we have done roundabout ways of helping people buy things that we had leans on, but I, I guess my opinion is that it's probably too complicated to do here at this table and maybe we refer it to the manager. I just pulled the property up. It's never been assessed for more than sixty-nine thousand dollars, you know, so it, it could be a big win for the city long-term. I mean, even when there was a house there.
Sure.
Today, there, there's no building and the land is worth three. So.
One of the problems I think that we have is we kinda set precedent if we start waiving stuff and taking demolition fees away or covering them or doing other things. I mean, there's maybe ways that we can direct them to places to get some assistance, but I'm a little.
Well, I would be interested in actually developing a policy because I think this is a barrier to a lot of lots being redeveloped. And I think we wanna encourage, you know, folks like these gentlemen to come and figure out how to, how to reinvest in these properties. So we need, if we're gonna set a precedent, we need to think through how that would apply in all instances and what kind of conditions we wanna put on it to ensure that we don't just waive it and nothing, nothing happens. But, but I'd be in favor of seeing something that we could apply in other situations.
And I, and I apologize, I didn't, didn't look this one up, but what did you pay for the land, what did you pay for it?
Well, it hasn't been, it's under contract right now.
We're, we're pretty much having the title opinion stage and then that's where we'll find out where all the information, any, pretty much like shouting from rooftops if anybody owes any money against the homeowner for the land. And then we contacted city attorney and then the demo amount was seventeen-five.
Are you working, the form, are you working with the former owner, the bank or the insurance?
Former owner, yeah. So she let it go to tax sale and that's pretty much where she's gonna let it go from, from this time on, really. So it might get, if somebody doesn't do their homework, like it'll go to a tax sale again, but with the, like, tax sales only come out like a month ahead of time, so someone can only do so much homework on it. So it'll probably get purchased, but nothing will really ever happen to it. Because once, once they find out that seventeen thousand dollar mark, they'll, they'll just let it go again. And it'll pretty much just go through. So it'll take a number of years to like get there, but like four or five years, but then it'll pretty much just end right back here and then someone will, that's usually where it stops. Like, because there's not really like a way to, to get it to go any further.
No, that's correct. I, I would agree with, with kinda some of the thoughts here. That is something that's probably hindering.
Impediment.
Yeah. That's, I mean, we wanna get into the neighborhoods, probably gonna need fifty people like him that are gonna go do what we need him to do.
Yeah, it kinda fits into our blitz on blight.
Yeah, I'm a hundred percent.
But I think it is, Josh points out, I think we've gotta make a.
Consistent policy.
Exactly. Well, I, I would refer it to you or Linda, you can.
Yeah, let's, let's refer it, refer to the study and we'll get, we'll get back to these gentlemen.
And actually develop a policy.
I think we need to have a policy as to what we're going to do.
One thing I have a concern about though is what about for the developers that have already paid the demolition costs to the city? We gonna refund the money back to them? I don't think so.
No, but that's part of the concern. You're right.
Yeah, I just want, yeah, I think Josh just hit the nail right on the head. We gotta have a policy and a procedure in place that makes sense. I agree with the mayor. Let's get these homes off our spreadsheet and move forward, but let's, let's not leave people in the dust in the process.
Yeah, so we've, we've got, we've had a long history of doing this with nonprofit partners and whatnot where we know what the product is gonna be. So what I'm hearing is the policy needs to expand into for-profit developers as well and, and see what that policy could look like.
And what would you build there?
We would just go with the single-family again. So we wouldn't rezone it or anything like that. We would just try to keep a single-family house like around a thousand or eleven hundred square feet there.
Just depends on what. Type C. Or E.
We're doing infill.
When district gets in.
And it's infill.
This is for all of you who took the time to attend our meeting this morning.
Yeah. It all depends.
We can put that together.
And Scott, one other thing too. I know I've talked to you about this, but in talking to some of these other A, B and C-type infill people like Pam Carmichael, her view is just give us the property, we'll tear it down. That's an option that, that probably would have appealed to me too. And then I was approached by another rehabber and they said, if you're gonna tear the thing down and the price is gonna be about, let's say, twenty-seven thousand, why not give us the money and we'll rehab the home? And you'll give them a timeframe to get it done. I think it's, all this has done is, is to put a focus back in, in rehabbing our neighborhoods, bringing the stuff up to A, B, C or D and, and make our neighborhoods safe and, and good again. So, I mean, let's look, you know, bring those people in, hear what they've got to say and let's, along with what Josh says, let's get a policy in place and make it all work.
I'll add, I mean, I, I've heard the same comments on the rehabbing, the bills heard. I, I think we have opportunities there too if we think about some of the programming. And I know Invest DSM is meant to, meant to be thinking through some of these things, but I think there's a real eagerness to, to create the framework to allow these things to happen.
Correct.
And there's, there's policies that we have in the past with NFC and others.
Home Inc.
Home Inc. And to look at, you know, how we, we handle it and do we treat guys that are gonna, is they. Home Inc. And to look at, you know, how we, we handle it and do we treat guys that are gonna, is, they say here they're gonna, they're gonna flip, they're gonna buy, they're gonna hold, they're gonna develop, which are all good things. But we've had certain programs which were pretty much streamlined for owner occupants. So they could get in and they could get certain amounts of money to help them rehab. And then it's a forgivable loan if they own it for a certain amount of years. Now they're, I don't think that's what they have in mind here, but.
And they would have to do the work, Mr. Mayor? So if we, I mean, they would be guaranteed if we gave a property owner the money, the work has to be completed by X date. Is that right?
Yeah.
Some stipulation.
And they have to use the money for that.
Right. Okay. And then it's a forgivable loan?
There are programs like that, but there are specific neighborhoods where that's applied. Question is, are we gonna broaden that concept?
Is that through HUD then?
We're throwing that to you.
Most of that is, yes.
That's through HUD, isn't it?
Most of it is.
And I, I think some of it depends on what the person's gonna buy the lot for. Because if the lot is, you know, literally nothing and it costs $17,000 to tear it down, but then they sell the lot for $30,000, I think we need to look at those things.
Well, and with the CDVG funds, there's so many, I mean, you're using Davis, I mean, they're not going in and fixing it up. You're using Davis Bacon Wages, correct? For the CDVG funds?
Uh, I'm not certain about that. I'd have to ask. But this is different. This, this is a forgiveness of, of a lien against the property. So we're not talking about.
And with those funds, the houses have to be in like semi-good shape where they would actually turn out a, a better product, really. Usually with the ones we're talking about, like.
They need to go.
Nothing, nothing stays like, everything needs to go, just.
So do you do rehab too by chance or is it just new construction?
We do rehab.
All right, we've got a motion on the, on the floor. Scott, we're giving you more work.
All right, it's good work.
Seven, yes?
Thank you guys for coming in.
We'll get in contact with you.
Item 41 was withdrawn. Item 42 is withdrawn. Item 43 was withdrawn. Item 44 was withdrawn. Item 45 is an intergovernmental 28E agreement between the City of Des Moines, Polk County and Invest DSM Inc., Council Communication Number 19-376. Mr. Manager, you wanna quickly highlight what we're doing here?
Quickly. So we have some great work. Kinda similar to what the conversation before was, we have four identified investment districts that were developing new policies, new opportunities. The whole gamut of rehab and new construction is included. We have Amber Lynch leading that effort. We are in a very close partnership with Polk County. So this, this agreement, the 28E, is to establish the funding levels and it references the board representation from each of the entities. So it would need to be approved by Polk County, who I understand is scheduled to do that tomorrow, I believe, at their next meeting. And then it would also be presented to Invest DSM because they would then be bound by how those funds could be spent. This is geared towards improving our neighborhoods, specifically getting right to the heart of our housing inventory. Similar again to the conversation we just had, there is a, an awful lot of need for, for new construction on empty lots within these four areas and then also rehab work. So a lot to get accomplished and then we'll hear more about Invest DSM as we move forward.
Good.
This is also all due and, and thank, and thanks to our citizens for voting in the local option sales tax. This was at the heart of that conversation as well.
Now Scott, this still means NDC and NFC keep their separate funding or is that all gone?
No, no, no. No change. In fact, I would anticipate even more opportunities for them. But that's based on what Invest DSM comes up with for the workload.
Okay.
We're gonna give them a lot.
I'll move 45. Seven, yes?
Item 46, this is the development agreement with Swaps Cash LLC, Lincoln and Lisa McElroy, property owners and developer for the construction of a new six-story, 112-room Element Hotel project at 304 East Wallin Street and approving the proposed conceptual development plan, Council Communication Number 19-377. Open it up. Is anybody here to speak to this item?
Mr. Mayor, the owner's here, but he doesn't need to come up and speak. I will move, unless he wants to, but I will move item 46. You can speak if you want.
I have a question for the, the owner. On something that I just wanna see if they're willing to incorporate in. So one of the questions I had for, for staff was just the EV readiness. And I know, I think it's built in. There are a couple of chargers that you're planning on doing. And I was wondering if you'd be willing to build EV readiness, not, not the chargers, but make sure that as you're constructing the parking lot, sometimes getting the conduit there for the next step if you need eight, eight or 12 chargers or more in the future. If you'd be willing to do the readiness piece so, so that, so that as things change, we're prepared for that and you don't have to retrofit it and maybe that gives you a little bit of a competitive advantage. Okay. That's all I have.
With that, I'll move item 46.
Is that it? Seven, yes?
And folks, with that, at 5:23, this meeting has come to a conclusion. Thank you all for attending. And unless anybody has something else we wanna talk about, let's call this meeting adjourned.
The Plant of Wayne website listed tonight is the presentation of zoning regulation.
Set the date of hearing.
So we, we had a meeting on that a little bit this morning, although today we're just setting the date of the hearing for that specific piece. So it, it wasn't open for exactly discussion. It's, we just set the date of hearing. But we're gonna have another meeting, if you would like to attend, next Monday. So it'll be in here at 7:30 AM. Well, no, it's a hearing, but it's the discussion, a work session with council and staff talking about it. And we've been receiving input from various citizens, developers, interested parties as it relates to the, that, that particular ordinance and how it works. We know that change is, is tough, especially on an ordinance that was written in 1965 and we're changing it. And so we're trying to move into the 21st century and so we appreciate everybody's input. I don't know if that answers your question, but gives you sort of an idea what we're doing. It was setting, it was setting date of hearing at 4:30, which is what we did, yeah. All right, thank you for all for coming. Appreciate it.